All right. County Regional Planning and Division of Orders, please. Mr. Chairman, please. I'll lead the prayer and Mike Buck will lead the proceedings. Bye, women, please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you again for this day and the opportunity again we have to serve our fellow man. We thank you for this new week and we pray, Heavenly Father, this week will be, we'll serve it to your advantage and we'll, we'll serve our fellow man the way, the way we need to be, the way we need to do. We pray that you'd just be with us in this meeting. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see it. Call roll, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen.
I don't know.
Richie Bowlen.
Here.
Veronica Buchanan.
Here.
Gary Farley.
Here.
Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Steve Sandlin.
Here.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Vincent Windrow. Craig Lynch.
Present.
We have a quorum.
We entertain a motion on approval of April minutes.
Chairman, I move that they be approved as mail.
You have a second?
Second.
All present in motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Doug, anything withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir.
Waiver request. Randall Ray, fire hydrant waiver request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is located along Windrow Road to the west of Kingwood Lane. The proposed parcel is about 1.8 acres in size and we have included a copy of the plat in your agenda packets on your table to show you the area and what it is we're discussing today. The applicant is proposing to create a new lot, again about 1.8 acres in size, from an existing 200 acre tract in order to place a new single-family dwelling on the property. Since that parcel is less than five acres, it does have to meet our subdivision regulations, which require that a fire hydrant be located within 1,000 feet of the property. The nearest fire hydrant is located about three quarters of a mile from the lot. Information provided by Consolidated Utility indicates that the line in front of the property cannot support a hydrant due to capacity. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, do you want to have questions?
And so CUD says it wants to apply...
Yeah, if I remember correctly, the, there's plenty of, was it pressure? Yeah, there's plenty of pressure, but it's, the capacity is the...
Right. Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion, we approve the request.
All right, do you have a second? You have a motion, a second. All present in motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Doug, we made it where staff could approve ones that were less than X number of lots or for family members and things. Could we not look into where staff could approve it if CUD says there's not the capability for a fire hydrant there?
Well, it was, there was something, it was a, some sort of a policy. It was never actually anything that was in the regulations, which is why we bring them all here. I mean, quite frankly, I think that's something that's really better suited as the planning commission as opposed to leaving it up to just one person. So that's why we bring them here.
Okay.
Okay, Jeff Mullins, easement size waiver.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. There's actually four different waivers in this particular application and I'll, I'll try to go into them briefly. This is a piece of property, it's located along Burke's Hollow Road to the very southeast of the county. The tracks in question that you're looking at, again, there's a, a copy of that in your agenda packets today, but we're looking at about three tracks, roughly about 21 acres in size. There's an existing 25-foot easement that accesses the tracks in question. The easement, along with the tracks, appeared to have been approved quite some time ago. The applicant wants to add property, if you look at the map that's in your agenda packets, you'll notice I've numbered the, the lots, well, the tracks really, one, two, and three. The applicant is present, so I hope he corrects me if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I've got the, how, what he wants to do. Basically, what he wants to do is take some of the land from tracks one and two, keep those both over five acres, transfer that property over to track three to make it a little over 10 acres, and then create a new tract off of number three, which would give him another five acre tract. So all the tracks in question would still be five acres or greater in size. Again, he's wanting to take some of the land from one and two, transfer it to three. That in and of itself isn't the issue. It's the fact that he wants to create a new lot from track three, another five acre track for that, on that easement. And that's where the issues start coming into play. So there's four different issues we're looking at here. The easement not being 50 feet in width as required by the subdivision regulations. The number of, of tracks on this easement already exceeds three. There's already four on it, so he's asking for permission to put the fifth. He would not, he, he doesn't want to have to build it to county standards and I'll let him kind of explain, you know, the maintenance of that, or there's some information in your agenda packets. And then there's no, there's no fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of the tract. There is correspondence in your packet as well from Consolidated Utility that they can't serve the development due to the elevation of the property. And again, there is some information in regarding the maintenance of the easement. Again, the applicant is present and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Okay. You want to have questions or want to get the applicant out?
I'd like to hear him say what he's, explain what he's...
Okay. Actor, yes. Right over there, please.
Okay. Basically, like he said, I've got four lots off of a private...
Jeff Mullins?
I'm sorry?
You Jeff Mullins?
I am. Like I said, basically, I've got four lots off of a private, private easement drive and I'd like to make a fifth one. The land is pretty secluded and according to him, the elevation on the property is, is pretty steep. And it's, basically what he says, we're asking for the waiver on the 25-foot easement to get back to the property. It's pretty hilly, pretty rocky. The 50-foot easement would be pretty, pretty extreme. Basically, I, I've got a 9.86 acre tract, we're going to try to split it and make a five acre tract on each lot there and just go from there, basically. I'd like to live back on the property, it's secluded, it's got a good view. And the driveway, I'll, I'll take care of the driveway as far as maintaining it. The water, water company, Consolidated, they just can't, can't get the water up to that elevation to support the water for, for that. So I've got to put booster pumps on the water taps down at the road to get up to the property. But basically what I'm asking for is just the waiver on the four...
Are there already lot, houses built on these other four lots?
There is double-wide trailers and I'm wanting to build a house on the four lot.
Be your personal lot?
Exactly. And I want to separate that lot by taking property off of the other two lots that I have to create a fifth lot for the future, you know, providing what I want to do with that lot in the future. That's, that's basically...
What about electricity? Have you already got electricity back there?
We've got electricity about halfway to the fatherless lot. I'll have to go to the electric company and go from there, providing I get the waiver today.
Have you already talked to them about how much it costs? Did you get power back there and things like that?
I have not. That's there again until I find out about the waiver on the four issues. I'm just...
Well, once we give you the waiver and then you could create the lots, then it gets too expensive to get the electricity back there and things, then, then it's kind of at a stalemate and some point down the road, you sell the lot, somebody comes in and buys the lot, then they're looking at us, wondering why we created a lot and there aren't services back there.
That, that will be taken care of. If I, if I am given the waiver, that will be taken care of.
If I, if I may interject just real fast, he will have to plat this lot because it'd be on an easement and extension, extension of utilities, that would have to be a platted situation. So...
Before the plaque to be approved, have to have...
He would probably, right, I mean, they'd have to show utilities and the fact that, the fact that, that gives him another step before he can even create the lot, you know, make sure his, if he goes and he finds out that he can't practically extend utilities because of cost, then he just, even though he has waivers, he just doesn't create the tract, so it doesn't, nothing changes.
He can't create the tract until he actually has that worked out.
Right, he'd have to plat it, correct.
Question I got, you spoke a while ago of CUD, because of elevation, they can't do the fire flow as far as water for fire protection, for the fire hydrant. What about domestic water?
We have a two-inch line that runs right by...
Please come up to the microphone.
Yeah, come here, up in.
We have a two-inch line that runs up Burke's Hollow and it runs, it stops on the other side of the road from this gentleman's property. And we would install a tap on the other side of the road, but our tank elevation there is 1,100 feet and the top of his property is well over 1,300. So he would have to extend his service line from where we put the tap on the other side of the road and then put in a booster pump. But that pump, I mean, it's going to have to have over 200 feet ahead just to get from where he is or where the tap is up to the top part of the...
So not only the electrical, maybe a high cost, you're getting domestic water, maybe a higher, a high cost as well, so that's...
And each individual lot would have to have its own meter, its own pump.
Right.
Its own water line.
Exactly.
Your, your, your 50-foot easement, why, why can't you get a 50-foot easement again?
Basically, I, I would like to keep it private if I'm going to live back there anyway. The 50-foot easement, it's, it's rough terrain. It's kind of rocky getting back to the property. There's a beautiful building site, once you get back there, but getting back there, it's pretty, pretty rough terrain. Trying to get to the property, it'd be extremely expensive to go ahead and do a 50-foot instead of the 25-foot. I'm trying to, trying to bypass that part.
Well, but you could give a 50-foot easement and you wouldn't have to build a 50-foot road, but you've got a probably a road, probably got, you've got some bluffs that you've got to contend with.
Right. I can probably get a 50-foot easement, but a 50-foot road, there again, it's, with a property being in the situation at its end, it's almost not feasible for the 50-foot.
Yeah, I understand, I've got something like that. But you could give 50-foot easement, you could give the...
Right, right, you could, could get a 50-foot.
Are you going to sell one of these lots?
I'm not planning on it. I've got a son and in the future I'd like for him to build a house back on the property.
But you own all three of them?
I, I do.
You own all four of them then?
Right, exactly.
Well, where's the fifth one at? Or the other lot?
If you look on, yeah, it'll be part of, it's not shown on the survey that's in here, but if you look at the, what do I mark, three, it'd be kind of in the back, kind of in the back over here, this is where...
It's part of the 9.86?
Yes.
So where are the mobile homes at?
I currently live in one.
Where are they at, located on the...
They're on lot two and three.
So how are they getting utilities and things of that sort?
Middle Tennessee Electric and Consolidated Utility currently supply them.
Track three is the problem?
Right.
Okay.
Well, you got, you've got pressure, you, you've got, so you've just got pressure to it, you don't have pump on it?
Not right now, I don't. I've got plenty of pressure right now and the property that I'm wanting to get to, I would have to put a pump on. I've talked to Brian at CUD and he said I'd have to put booster pumps to accommodate the...
So your, your big elevation change is between one and two and then three? Is that line on the backside of this map we're looking at here?
It's basically from lot two to lot three is where I start coming into trouble with the water. It's where the steepest elevation on the property is.
Are any of these mobile homes on any type of well water or anything? Or just straight CUD?
No, not, just CUD now. Used to be on well, but not now.
Okay.
Doug, if he wanted to build a house back there on the back of lot three, could he not get a variance to build a second structure on that one tract of land?
Well...
If we, if we turn this down, I mean...
We, he would have to ask for a conditional use permit. Now, we did change our regs regarding accessory dwelling units and those type things. If he had 15 acres, he could do two by right, two principal structures by right, but now he'd be looking at an accessory dwelling unit and have to meet certain standards through a conditional u, or, I mean, if he could do it by right, if he could meet certain standards, but...
We used to give variances for a second structure on one, on one tract of land.
Conditional use is right, and that's similar, the process is still similar, just, again, we kind of overhauled how we, how we handled them, they would just have to meet certain criteria.
With 10 acres, would he qualify not by right?
Well, it would, it would depend on the size of the structure and everything he was wanting to build. One of the criteria is size of the lot. If it's over an acre, that's one of the, one of the criteria for doing one by right.
Took a little off one and two, he'd have over 10 acres in lot three.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, but do it by, but to have a second principal by right, he'd have to have 15, so...
Any other questions?
Can a fire truck get to this property?
I'll make it where a fire truck, wouldn't have no trouble getting to the property whenever I build the 12-foot easement, or 25-foot easement, I'm sorry, back to the third lot. And I'll, I'll keep the, the road maintained where there wouldn't be no trouble for him to get back there.
Will you go between one and two to get to the three? I mean, are you going to go on the side of one or are you going for your easement?
It actually will be going through both lots, two and, one and two.
I always try and support somebody doing something on their own property and all, but what, where we get into problems in these type situations is you've got all the best intentions and all, but 10 years down the road, you've got a job somewhere else or you've moved and it's changed hands and all of a sudden there's three different families living back there and they're fighting over keeping the road up and everything else where it works good while the original person is still on, on site, but down the road it gets to be a problem. Somebody going, how'd that ever get approved for those houses down that little gravel lane when there's not a person that takes the interest who's the person who created it to start with?
Right, it's, if the property was ever sold, and I don't have any intentions of selling it, if it was sold, I'd have it wrote up with an attorney on who's responsible for taking up the responsibility of the drive.
I think that that varies the thing you're talking about. And Mike, we don't, we have that problem now where years ago, things were approved and we've got people complaining they think the county ought to pave the road and he's shaking his head yes, so...
There's one over in my district that the ambulance can't find this lady and she lives back down the end of a private road and when she bought her house, she thought it was a public road because the mail carrier actually goes down the road, but it's not a public road. It's over little King's Tuck Road over off Buckeye Bottom and it's a private road and all the neighbors have to chip in for gravel and, and it has gotten to be a real problem over there.
And Mitch brought up a good point a while ago about the fire engine getting back there. It's going to be very hard to get, you say it's 1,300 foot elevation?
It's...
It's, well, it's 200 from the low to high, over, over several hundred feet.
Right, so...
1,300 foot road.
1,300 foot road at 200 foot, that's going to be pretty hard. I know from experience on that.
Is, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I was going to say, i- i- in terms of your concerns about who ultimately would have the authority or the, the responsibility to maintain the road, isn't, aren't those kind of items just cleaned up in a, in a deed and in, in the sale through attorneys? And, I mean, all, isn't that language all...
A lot of time it gets dropped, from what I've found out, people don't realize they're buying a house and it, that's not a public road in front of their house. And you would think people would do a little more homework before they close on a house, but sometimes they just let the realtor and the attorney work it up and say, where do I sign? And then two years later, they're waiting for somebody to pave their road. Nobody comes along, you know?
If I ever sold the property, I'd make sure that it was in black and white as far as what's going on.
And not, and also not saying that you, that you wouldn't and have good intentions, but like Commissioner Jordan here just said, sometimes those things get dropped. That's, that, I've had people in my county commissioner district that are on drainage issues. That's one reason that the county had to get involved in the drainage issues here in the past few years because there were people that were buying homes, they didn't know about the drainage problems that they were having and all of a sudden, next thing you know, they're flooded. And, you know, so...
I wouldn't have a flooding issue, that's for sure.
Nah, I'm, I'm just using that as an example because, just like the road, no, you're not going to flood, there's going to be a heck of a time getting up there to you if you have a fire.
Doug, this easement was more than three lots, including additions to existing easements are required to be built to county standards. What was that language? What's the date on that language?
We did that back in 2008, I believe.
Two years ago?
About, basically, 2008, maybe early 2009, I don't remember the exact date, but I think it was 2000, late 2008.
Do you know when the original easement here was done?
The earliest we saw, it was existence as, as early as 92. Now, that was just the information that was on that survey that was submitted to us. It, I mean, it was probably been in existence even before that, but at the latest, it was 1992, which meets our grandfather status in our, or the date for our grandfathering in our subregs.
Didn't we put a cap on the number of lots off of private easement though?
Yeah, I mean, you did. Basically, you said three lots, anything above that has to get the waiver and then be built to county specification. That was what the regulation was. And that's what he's asking for a waiver from, the number of lots and then having to build it to a county spec.
Now, what does that mean, build to county spec? The road would have to be built to county spec?
Right, right.
So even if we approve this, now he's got to build a road up?
Well, not, not if you approve it as presented, as presented, he's asking for a waiver to that.
Waiver there, yeah. I can remember the conversations when we were doing this, you know, we're trying to treat everybody equally and when you get over a couple of lots, you can become a developer. And so, you know, if we allow this, then what's the, you know, where do we stand two months from now when somebody brings another five lot subdivision up here with a private easement?
He'd have to build a road to county specs and that's going to cost a lot of money. Yeah. Any other comments? Any other questions? We're trying to help you out, it's hard.
I understand, that's, that's something, I'd, I'd like to build a house back on the property. I mean, it's, it's a nice piece of property and it's secluded. I'd kind of like to keep it that way if, if possible.
You could not build it on the nine acre lot?
I could, but as a matter of fact, I can, the nine acre lot does not have nothing on it. What I was wanting to do was get two lots out of the, the nine acres, two five acre, two 5.1 acre tracks out of the, and I've got a son and in the future, I'm looking out for him too. If you had one, I'm sure you would. That's, that's the idea behind the second lot.
What's the idea? What's the purpose of the other two lots? Because if you own fi, if you would own five totals, you occupy one, your son occupies one, who's going to occupy the other three?
I would rent those out.
That's, that's where, by doing that, that's getting you into the predicament of, of the problems that we're, some of us are having. If you had, were just you and your son, and, and your son's for the future, then that could take care of those things. But it's, it's when you add those other two that's causing the problem, where it's some of the heartburn that we're having now.
The other two, like I said, I currently live in one and we don't have any trouble getting to those properties. We keep the drive up and...
But I think it's the number of, the number of lots off the, the easement and the road problems and stuff that we're, that some of us are having the problem with.
When, when your son gets ready to build, I think you may have dropped lot two and put it in the back right there to, to change lots around.
Did you just ask a question that Rhonda and I were just discussing? Lot three, according to this thing that I'm looking at right here, is the one we're trying to subdivide into two. What, what's to prevent him from going into building his home where he has and then at some time in the future, if his son wants to build, then come in and trial that subdividing at that time? He can do that right now, can he?
He could.
Yeah.
Without any variance at all.
Right, that's right.
I'm, I'm thinking what the guy's trying to do is to get ahead of the curve and we're asking him all these questions when he can go ahead and do what he wants to do right now and then come back later and try to get the other thing done. Right?
Doug, I still have a question too. I mean, we're going to take a little bit off one and a little bit off two and add it to the third.
Actually, we would just take a little off of lot three, I believe. Lot, there's one, two, and three lots.
Let me just, yeah, yeah, let me, what he's probably talking about is, I, I drew these on here, one, two, and three, just for discussion, so I would understand which ones they were talking about. So I think what you're, as I understood, what you were saying is take some from those two and combine it with this one back here.
Actually, just one of them, I believe.
Just one of them was going to be, okay.
Just one of them.
But regardless, however he was going to do that, one would be 10 acres, the other one would be just over five, so they would all still be five acres in size.
But you also, there was a fifth lot. I don't see where the fifth lot comes from.
Well, that would be...
I mean, I see one, two, and then we split three and make three and four.
Yeah, if you follow the easement from Burke's Hollow Road, okay?
Right. And this is the easement that's planted on here?
That's correct, that's correct.
Is the easement that we're going to use.
Right. Now, a- as you follow the easement from the road, you'll see that there's one there, it's about two, a little over two acres, it's got a two with a circle around it.
Yeah.
That's the first lot that's on the easement. Then you have what I, yeah, then you have what I numbered one and two, which are two and three, and then the one that's labeled three, which I wrote on there, that would be the fourth track. So there would be one more on there, which would be number five.
Actually, there are presently three, three functioning lots.
Four.
No, three functioning, I mean, with something already built on them, off this easement.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And the third lot has nothing on it.
The 9.86 acres has nothing on it. That, that's the one that I'm wanting to divide and be able to build a house on one tract of that and have the, the other one in, in the future.
What'd you propose, Jeff? What'd you say, Jeff?
The way I understand this, I could be all wrong, that 9.86 is already a lot, correct?
It is, right.
He can go back there and build right now. And then at some point in time, come back up here if his son wants to build and say, I'd, I'd like an additional lot and I need a variance for that. So I think he can do anything he wants to do right now, he's just trying to do it now instead of waiting to do it. That's, that's what I understand. Is that right, Doug?
I, I think you have a, a good grasp of the situation, Mr. Phillips, yes?
So I think he can go do exactly what he wants to do right now, but he's trying to make two lots out of that 10 acres and, and reserve one of them for future building. But if we tell him no, he can go in there and build his house anyway on that nine acres, correct?
I believe you're correct.
And if he gets his house built, he's already got his water dealt with, his electricity dealt with and all, then you're back up there just trying to get a variance or a lot for a family member and...
It makes it a lot easier for us to do it then.
Yeah.
Yeah, look, look, look better to us.
I'd settle for one step at a time.
The problem is, this is way out on Burke's Hollow Road, it's in the country, but Burke's Hollow, whatever, the lane, I'd, I'd go out there, dawn, reach Sawmill, get lumbered, but, but, you know, we've got to look at it just same, if it's on Last Casters Pike right here at the edge of city limits, you know, and we don't allow, you know, a lot of houses off of, it, it is in the county regardless of how far out in the country it is. Let me say this too, we approved one up in Tremble the other day, that was, correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, we added a fourth house to an easement. It was a necessity case, but it was already there, the houses were already there and the house couldn't, the existing way that the house had been accessed had kind of been cut off, I guess is the best way to put it. But the house is already there, so we, we, you know, if you're already there, it's a lot easier for us to work with. I guess is my point.
Okay. What's your wishes?
Well, i- if, if, it sounds like we're, we're gonna give a no, a nay vote here. But do we need to address these four particular items individually in terms of the, the motions? In other words, the fire hydrant within a thousand feet, the... I mean, if, if it's just a blanket?
I, I think since it's one application, I mean, either way is, I think will work. If it's, you're, you're actually his application, this was all under one application. I mean, you could just make it part of the motion that you're moving, if you wish to, to go that route, that you're just gonna move to deny the entire application.
Would we want to go and let him get the ten acres in?
Well, he can do that. I, I mean, if he wanted to shift some of the land around, he could do that anyway.
With over five acres, he gonna have to have a fire hydrant waiver, will he?
No, that, that would just be what we call a non, basically a non-subdivision, uh, transfer, basically.
He won't have to have the fifty foot easement, cause he's already got it.
Right, I mean, he's not creating a new lot, he's just shifting some of the lot line. He wanted to make that over ten, he could, he could do that now.
Like Jeff said, he can do anything he wants now anyway.
I like the motion to deny.
Motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll play the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no.
No.
Motion carries. Motion to deny. All right, uh, preliminary approval, nothing done?
No, sir.
Flat and bond extensions?
None.
Final?
None.
Site plan review, Jefferson Pike storage.
We got two of those. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did you, did you ask one question?
I, I do not. But I, I can still use the nine point eighty-six acres. If I decided to go and build a house, my personal house, I can use the nine point eighty-six acres for that.
And you can give me a call, we can talk more about that afterward, but, but yeah, I think you'd be fine.
Okay.
And you get your driveway in and your services up there, then it becomes, I guess, easier for us to do this.
Right, okay.
To allow you to build a second house on that track.
Okay.
Particularly if it's a family member.
Right.
For your son.
Right. Okay, appreciate it.
Jefferson Pike storage, yeah?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, this is a piece of property on, uh, West Jefferson Pike, not too far from the intersection with, uh, Lebanon Road. Uh, you may recall this, uh, particular property, this went through the planning commission and the county commission last year for rezoning for this, uh, specific use that we're seeing right here. Uh, they've submitted a site plan, we have done our review, there were a number of comments. For the most part, uh, they, uh, the engineer has addressed our concerns. Uh, we do have a couple of things though, that are outstanding that will bring to your attention. Uh, the first, uh, condition, uh, one of the conditions on the conditional use permit when this was approved was dedication of right of way. Uh, it looks like they've got it dedicated from the center line of West Jefferson Pike, when that actually should be from the existing property line. Uh, that's something I don't think that's going to, uh, that, that's gonna be difficult to fix, but that's something that does need to be noted. Also, uh, that'll change where the, uh, the entrance loca- the, the entrance is shown to the, um, to the existing pavement. Uh, that, again, when they shift that line, that'll just, it'll show that, the new right of way line. Uh, the zoning of the property, they have changed it, if you look in the, the lower left corner, they do show the, uh, correct setbacks and the correct zoning. However, actually on the property itself, they still have it labeled as R fifteen, so that would need to be changed. Uh, also, the, they do show some signage that, uh, where they have a pole sign there in the front at the entrance of the property. That may have to shift just a little bit because of the right of way dedication. Uh, there was a couple of questions on the second page of this plan, there's actually a, uh, landscape plan. Uh, for the most part, we're, uh, we're pretty happy with the plan that's submitted. If you recall, the, uh, backs of those buildings, the covered boat storage is going to be a split face block masonry material. So that'll act as a, a masonry wall fence, which will cut down the amount of landscape that they have to have on the property. Uh, however, some of the covered boat storage, the, namely the ones on the, not the very back, but in that little angled portion on the plan. Uh, those are still a little too close to the, uh, property line. They meet the setback, but the, the buffering requirement's still fifteen feet, so that building's gonna have to be shifted just a little bit up. Also, we didn't see anywhere on this plan that had, uh, how the plants are gonna be watered, uh, and maintained. Uh, we don't show any kind of a water line that we could see going back there. So that's something that the applet's gonna have to, uh, have to consider is how that is gonna remain viable. Uh, with that, again, that's, uh, the comments that we had. Uh, the, uh, the design engineer, Mr. Nick Gerald, he is here with Hudson Steel, and, uh, we can answer any questions that you may have at this.
It appears it's got like a thirty foot road all around where these, um, these buildings are at.
Correct.
Doug, how much did you?
I'm sorry?
Right of way, did you say on Jefferson?
Twenty-five feet.
Twenty-five.
Doug, is that, what's the total right of way from center line we need? I mean, the...
It'd be a hundred feet, it's a, it's an arterial.
So it's fifty feet from center line, okay.
Correct, I think that was just a misunderstanding on, on our part.
The property line there does go to the center of the road, so, but it's a, it's fifty foot.
Correct, correct.
So that's not a problem.
What about the watering of the shrubs?
It'd be temporary irrigation put in till they get established. Um, like I say, there's, there's no office proposed to this, it's a secured storage with, um, key, keypad, so there won't be any, any water line. But there will be some temporary irrigation added, um, to, um, to this to get the trees established.
What, can you elaborate on what's temporary irrigation?
Usually a couple of years, I mean, it sort of depends on if it's been the last two summers.
I mean, what, what is it? Not timeframe, but what is it?
Oh, it, it's, it's really just an, an underground irrigation system. I mean, today's world is the PVC pipes, that irrigation system's not that expensive. And, uh...
But there will be some kind of an irrigation system set up there that these could be maintained.
Right, mm-hmm. There's, I mean, there's, there's a water line out front, it's a U D line at eight inch, we're gonna add a hydrant to that. But, but they will have to have some irrigation, uh, to get the trees established for, over a couple of years. After that, they usually take off pretty well.
All right?
What was the, what was the water situation over here on this property for during all this flooding?
The flooding? Um, I went out after the flooding, just to look at that for sure. And there's a drive just upstream of this property, um, gravel drive with a forty-eight inch pipe under it. Water did not overtop that, that, uh, drive. Uh, you can drive through there, you know, no problem there. Uh, so out, you know, there, a lot of the front is in a floodplain situation. Uh, and a lot of that is upstream, Arnold Drive and under Jefferson Pike, there's smaller pipes which really have up, natural upstream detention today.
Stayed in with, in what you've got here on the site plan?
Uh, yes, sir.
We haven't seen rains like that.
Ever, probably, I guess, so you know.
I drove all over.
Didn't do it then, you know, it, it was just different pockets all over the county though, it might not have been as much rain there as it has been in other parts.
Yeah, our district got a lot more than this one did, for sure.
Now, this, the rest of the area, is it, I don't see on there, and it's probably on there, but is it gravel paved or what?
Um, everything we're gonna do in phase one will be asphalt pavement. The building's, you know, concrete slab, but everything will be asphalt pavement.
In phase one?
Phase one. Phase two, we'll come back with a site plan in the future. I mean, the idea is to construct phase one and if the rentals go well, they fill up, they'll come, be coming in with phase two.
Isn't this gonna be a ga- a gated?
I believe it is.
It'll be fenced and gated and, and it, and there's no office, it's just a secured storage, either corridor keypad situation.
Actually, Mr. Farley, if you look at the, uh, the bay and entrance in, when you get to the, right near the buildings, you'll see there, the, the gate right there on the, on the right.
Okay, any other questions? Motion to approve, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a quick question on the motion, is that with the exceptions that Doug was talking about, clearing up some of those?
Yeah, I would just, if you wanna make a motion for the, the subject of staff comments.
And, and we agree with those comments, there was nothing out there.
All right. Have a motion, a second, I'll play the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Center of Murfreesboro, yeah?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is the Islamic center of Murfreesboro, it's located on Veals Road, uh, directly adjacent to the Grace Baptist Church. Uh, the site plan was submitted, uh, there were a number of, uh, of items that the staff identified and sent to the, both the architect and also to the design engineer. Uh, just, uh, most of the comments we had have been addressed, uh, but I will go over just a few things. Uh, they indicated the height of the proposed structure on the plan, as you, you can see that on the, on the site plan, about fifteen feet. Now, they have a forty foot maximum, uh, to what they call, I believe it's a, now maybe not saying this right, and if I'm not, I apologize, but the, the minaret or minare. Um, I'm assuming that's something like a, a steeple. Uh, if it is, then that's exempt from the height restrictions, but, uh, if it's not, then it would have to, we'd have to look at that, cause we have a maximum building kind of thirty-five feet. So, uh, just a little clarification on that. Uh, the setbacks, one of the issues we had were the setbacks shown were incorrect. Uh, it looks like they corrected the setbacks, but they didn't actually correct the line. Uh, the site plan still shows twenty-five foot front setback, uh, fifty foot on the, yeah, twenty-five side, fifty on the front, and the fifty on the rear. However, the side setback still measures about fifteen to twenty feet, so that line will have to be shifted. Um, the utility certifications, actually on the utility plan, there's about three or four different sheets to this plan. Uh, well, actually about five or six, excuse me. Uh, the utility plan, which is on, uh, page two, they do have the certifications on there. Uh, however, they'll need to just revise the certifications, actually put the site plan name, uh, like underwater service, where it says, I hereby certify that the site, that the plan is titled. Then parentheses, they have site plan name, they would just have to, to do that, that, again, that's, that's, that's fairly normal. Uh, on the, you'll notice that the, that's the second to last sheet is the landscape plan. Uh... One of the issues, one of the questions we had about this really was, you see that this differs pretty significantly from the landscaping that's shown on the site plan. It kinda looks like they just left that layer on when they should have just turned it off on the site plan, because this, this would be what's controlling, not what's on the site plan. So they would need to just turn those, turn that particular layer off on the, on the first page. Because the trees and everything they're showing there don't correspond to what the actual landscape plan is showing. Also, uh, it looks like there's, on the landscape plan, there's two trees toward Veals Road there that might have vision triangle issues. Uh, those, those trees may not need to be relocated, but, uh, what we asked them to do is to show the vision triangle right through there, they may be fine. It's really close, but, uh, we'd like them to, to show that as well. Uh, besides that, uh, there's some questions about drainage. And, uh, I know the design engineer, Mr. Steel is present, as well as our, uh, our engineers on staff, Mr. Todd Sullivan, and they can discuss the drainage a little bit more detail.
What's, uh, is this an existing cemetery on here, or is this a new cemetery?
It'd be a proposed cemetery.
Proposed cemetery?
Yeah, which would have to go to the B Z A, and they're aware of that, and are planning to make application.
It goes to B Z A, does the state have control over that? I mean, are there state guidelines?
State guidelines, and really, the research we've done, they don't, really, they leave a lot of it up to the local jurisdictions and how they, they handle it. Uh, from what we've seen, uh, and what they're proposing, it appears to be our regs, but it'll have to go through the, um, it'll have to go through the, the board of zoning appeals, or that portion of it.
Steve, there's several, go ahead. There's several things here that Doug was talking about, steeple?
Uh, that is in fact a minaret, I believe is correct. You know what the height is at?
We estimated it to be fifty. So who did it? I mean, these guys from Chattanooga?
He's estimating it to be about fifty foot. Is there in fact a height limitation, Doug, or? But it is, it is like a steeple.
If it's like a steeple, then something like that's exempt from the regs.
It's a non, it's a non-occupied space. Okay.
Landscape?
Uh, landscaping, we can take care of those issues, uh, I'm sure, and this is Mr. Pat Newhoff, by the way. He's with Newhoff Taylor Architects from Chattanooga, that's actually who I'm working with, and he's with me here today. Um, as far as the landscape plan, Kevin Gunther of my office prepared the plan that's at the back of your plan set. And I'm sure Pat will be glad to turn off the trees on the first sheet. So we'll just turn those off, that's not a problem. The vision triangle, we can show that, that's not a problem. If we need to move the tree back, we can do that.
Right, it's just, that, that's what our concern was, it's just it's so close to the entrance that...
Setback and the drainage and all that?
Uh, setback's no issue, drainage really isn't an issue either, other than I just thought it might be good to explain, uh, to you all what's going on out there. Uh, I've explained it to the, to the owners, and I explained it to Dale Corbett. Um, and I've got actually a presentation board, I hope you can... See this? Gail, I'm gonna kinda get in front of you. Uh, our site is located here with Veals Lane at the bottom and the Bradable Pike to the left. Basically, the building is being built on the high spot on the site. And what we're trying to do is to allow the drainage to flow as it does today, but solve a few problems along the way as we can. Um, you see the red dash line that I have, the building would be here. The front half of the parking lot flows down toward Veals Lane. And I don't know if you can see the blue line, there's a small closed contour down here where water would wanna pocket down on Veals Lane. Partially on the Grace Baptist Church property, partially on this property. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna cut a swell, a ditch across the front. So rather than have that just fill up and drain to the east or to the right, we're gonna go ahead and cut that swell, so we don't have that ponding there. This area to the right of the front of the site flows down to the far right-hand corner. When it gets down here, there's another closed contour. And water would tend to stand, if it rained enough, hard enough. Uh, rather than have that water from our parking lot and building going here and onto our neighbor, we're gonna build a berm and use that as a detention area. And we'll take the overflow from the detention on our property back to the back to a hole that's back here in the back. Uh, everything in the back of the property flows to the back, and it's a large, flat area. There is a hole where apparently the previous owner, or some previous owner, tried to dig a pond, but apparently it's not held water. Uh, the soil on the entire site is really good, it's the best soils in the county, our Lowman's, our, um... I'm forgetting the names of the other good soils, but they're excellent soil. So as a result, I went out after the, after the big rain a few weeks ago, I went out to this site to see if water was standing, I was concerned that it might be. But there wasn't any, and apparently the soils are so good, it infiltrates. But there's a possibility, and I wanted the owners to understand this, and you all to understand it, we're following the natural path. If it rained enough, these depressions fill up, but they kinda would flow this way. And that's what we're doing, we're taking our water back here to the back. And the back, as you look at your site plan, you'll notice the back part of the property is used primarily for recreation. Now, there is a spot shown for a cemetery.
It's that hole between the cemetery and athletic field?
Uh, it is, if you look on about the fifth page, I think it is, you'll see my grading plan. In fact... I've got a copy of it here also. That hole is right there, and you're right, uh, Mr. Lynch. Lynch, it's in between that area that's a proposed cemetery and the area that's the athletic field. Now, the athletic field is where the soils have been identified for the subsurface disposal of the septic from the site. So that can't be disturbed very much, if any at all, because if they, if we push dirt around to make the field flatter, then we're gonna disturb the soils that we use for septic. So what we're gonna do basically is leave the back in as much a natural state as we can and allow the water to flow as it always has. And I'll be glad to try to address any questions you might have.
What's the future development part right here, this little over a half acre right here on the front?
Uh, Mr. Sandlin, I don't know, do you know, Pat, or can you address that, please? That front six tenths of an acre?
Currently, there are not plans for that, it's, uh, future development, either for their use or for other use, and, uh...
I see you got future parking on the right-hand side.
Correct.
And then this here is like...
It, it might be a freestanding building for separate use.
Well, what bothers me on that is your entrance and exit here, close to Bradable Pike and Veals, where they come together. That stacking right there for all this whole area coming off of Veals into Bradable. And then your, your services in and out of church right there, that's gonna be an issue if you put something commercial there. And then if you are, then that really needs to kinda be thrown out there now, I think, at this point, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, yeah, if I could address just one of those, uh, issues that you stated. Uh, that entrance nearest to Veals Road, I don't know if you could see it on the plan, but we actually, that was our concern we had as well. About, you know, if there was a lot of people trying to get into the site.
Yeah.
Right off that intersection, we've requested and they have complied with making that just an exit only, right there. So the stacking will actually be, you know, back on site as opposed to on the roof, correct, correct. Uh, now, but I think your concerns about the, uh, development, future development tract, you know, are valid in the sense that whenever it gets to that point, first of all, it's gonna be some kind of a commercial endeavor. Of course, it's gonna need to be rezoned, at this point, it's all residentially zoned. Uh, they're not, at this point, this, this obviously wouldn't create the subdivision lot, this, this, they would have to subdivide this, uh, cause right now it's just one tract. Uh, but, uh, you know, it might be possible to, you know, move the entrance or whatever, when we get to that point, I think that's something that we could review at that time. But, uh, we had, that was one of the comments we had, is what exactly is that tract for, that little parcel for? Uh, but again, apparently they're just reserving it for some, you know, future development, at this time it's unidentified. But, uh, the, the property is still zoned R fifteen, or actually R ten, and, uh, no, uh, no commercial zoning right in that area.
Okay. Steve, intense?
Uh, is, you're showing this ditch line then, is that what you was talking about on, on one of one, back, I don't know, four or five pages back?
It is, it's, it's across the front, Steve, taking the water from the front left part of the property across to the front right. And then there's a detention area, and we direct it from there back to the back. Cause we didn't want that parking lot drainage to go over onto the neighbor's property, where it does today.
And, and this whole area, I mean, that's why, this whole area's low, and, and typically, that's where all the drainage for this whole area goes, there's no other way for it to get out. Uh, and, and Steve showed me a report today from their geotech report that this is not a sinkhole, it is a, a, a pond. So they have that in a, a geotechnical report saying that this is a, a pond that was dug.
There's then gonna be an open ditch in the back, since they got, I guess, basketball court or something, there's gonna be...
We're, we're showing a pipe, getting back to that, yes, sir.
It's pipe.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions?
I would assume you can do that drainage under the septic, further septic site then?
Mike, we've got adequate soils, we feel like we can run that pipe. Mike, we've got adequate soils. We feel like we can run that pipe and leave our 25-foot buffer on either side that the health department requires. We're actually running it through the worst of the best soil.
Okay.
Will this be a conventional step system, a septic system, or will it be like a small step system?
It could be either one. It depends on the sizing of it when it's designed. If it's, and I forget the number of gallons per day now, where the state requires that it be considered a large-scale conventional system, it's large enough that you have to use a pump, then an engineer like myself, or some other PE in Tennessee, would have to design it. Or they could go step. Probably with as good a soil as they have, they'll probably just do the large conventional system.
It'd be something this future development building could tie into that same system? What I was wondering, if you had a small step system, that would open up more doors for that front lot right there?
Yeah, you know, yeah, especially if it's owned by the same group of people, it would be. Now, if you tried to cut it off, you get into the questions of having the system on the lot.
Okay. Was, was everybody notified around the premises? What'd y'all send out on notification of the...
We handle this like we handle any site plan. We don't send notices for site plans.
It brings me back to the point of the cemetery part. Is this a public cemetery, or is this for like a members?
Private for their use, for members.
Okay. Now, that, when that comes to the BZA, we will send notices for that. I mean, that part of it. At this point, if for some reason, they went to the board of zoning appeals and didn't get approval, that part of the site plan just wouldn't be, wouldn't be billed, basically, or whatever. But yeah.
Steve, I also think there are conditions that the state of Tennessee requires to create a cemetery, you know, for perpetual maintenance, that sort of thing, so...
I've never seen it. I mean, we've never approved a cemetery, as far as I know. I mean, so I've got a lot, I had a lot of questions on it.
You know, it used to be...
I know the state would surely supersede what we, you know...
Well, you know, all...
Their regulations, yeah.
It used to be, all the old churches had cemeteries right beside them, and then religious facilities got away from that. I am starting to see that come back, either in this form, or in the form of what's called a columbarium, where people's ashes are placed instead of having a casket in the ground. So I am seeing that coming back.
Is that what, more or less, this is, is pretty much for a...
I think the intent here is just a cemetery for the use of the families that use this facility.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Mike? Anyone? Questions? Motion?
I would...
Doug, you okay?
Yeah. I would make a motion to approve based on staff's approval.
You have a second?
Second.
Can I ask a question while we've got the motion on the table? We, week before last, we spent a lot of time discussing athletics and hours of operation and those type of things. Should we be as concerned about this?
I don't think so. I mean, most churches that come through, I don't think we've ever talked about hours of operation or anything like that, religious institutions. I mean, this is really, the use of the property isn't really what we're discussing at this point. It's really the, how they're gonna build it. So I don't think that's necessary at this point.
Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug. Any public hearing?
No, sir. No public hearings today.
Work session for sign regulation.
Yes. Give me just a second to get this stuff in order here. Can y'all see that okay, or do we need to turn off the, some of the lights? Everybody, everybody good? All right. Well, we're gonna have just a work session here on our new signage regulations. You'll recall, back in February of this year, we had a, just a presentation. Part of our work plan for this year was to provide, to look at our sign regulations and provide some amendments to our sign regulations as they are today. Staff's been working pretty hard on this, and we do have a draft, what we think is a very, a good draft. However, with anything, it can always be made better. But we're pretty happy with where we are right now. We just want to take a few minutes to kind of go through some of the high points. And at this point, really, what we're looking at, this is really just a work session-type environment. We're not looking for any kind of recommendation for an approval at this point. We just want to kind of get your thoughts, and if anybody's here to discuss some of these things, we'd like to get their thoughts on the topics as well, and then we can kind of see where we go from there. So that's kind of what our agenda is for today. We'll talk just briefly about the goals of the project. We'll have an outline of the major changes, just kind of go into some of the major changes that we've done with this draft, talk about some next steps, and then have our questions and discussion. First of all, we have a couple of extra copies here, does, of the new regulations. Does everybody have theirs from the last meeting? Okay. We've also placed our, the existing regulations on your tables today as well, just for your reference, if you had questions about that. So we'll go ahead and just jump right in. If you have questions during this, you know, please feel free to ask them, if you want clarification on something at that point. We'll be more than happy to go into that. You'll recall, these from the first meeting we had back in February. These are the goals of the project that we had, to modernize our regulations. Our sign code has not been amended significantly in over 10 years. During that time, sign law, as well as technologies for signs, have changed. And so we did feel that this was a good time for us to take a step back and take a look at our existing regulations, even though we're nearing that part of the comprehensive plan project, where they'll be getting into the regulations. We felt this was something we wanted to go ahead and take care of now, as opposed to waiting until that point. Automatic changeable copy signage, we termed this a little differently at the work meeting we had before. It was dynamic signage. Basically, this is your digital type signage, that kind of thing. This really follows along from the first point where we talked about sign technology evolving over time. We've had received comments from the public at large, as well as from planning commission, about the possibility of allowing for automatic changeable copy signage, those types of technologies. And we'll elaborate on it a little further about what we're proposing. We are making some allowances for that, but I won't get into that now. I'll get into that here in just a few minutes. Content neutrality, simply put, it asks basically two questions. Do you have to look at the message to determine whether or not the rule applies? And another question is, the government trying to regulate or censor content? If the answer is yes to either of those questions, you have a regulation that could be considered content-based and could face legal scrutiny. We have looked at our regulations and have made changes to make the classifications as content-neutral as possible. Some of the differences you'll see in here, a question was asked before, why didn't we provide a copy of the regulations next to our old rigs? We really have done a pretty major overhaul here. It would have been kind of difficult to read, a cumbersome read for you. But a lot of the allowances we make, as far as square footages and things are concerned, don't change a whole lot. You'll notice that as we go along, that we didn't change a lot of the allowances, maybe just a little bit. If anything, we did go up on some. But again, we'll point out those differences as we go. So, there we go. Just kind of going through the sections themselves. Section 20.01 is the purpose and intent, and then 20 point, I'm sorry, 20.00 is purpose and intent, and 20.01 is the definitions. I won't go into every single definition or anything, but some of the major things that we did here, we updated our purpose and intent statement that you have on the new regulations, as opposed to our existing. And then we also updated our current definitions, added new ones to coincide with the new regulations. There were some new terms that we had to define. We actually took our existing definitions and went through them, and made a lot of, a lot of changes, updated them based on current sign, again, current sign regulations, as far as law is concerned, and looked at several different communities around us for some ideas, and also planning literature from the American Planning Association. General provisions, that's on pages four and six. We added what's called a substitution clause. Basically, what a substitution clause is, it allows the substitution of non-commercial signage for any allowable commercial signage. This really is applicable more in your commercial districts, essentially saying, whatever they were allowed, the limits they were allowed in a commercial area, they could use that same allowance for the non-commercial signage. Most planning literature reviewed strongly recommended this clause into the sign regulations, so we have added that as well. Non-conforming sign section was, was kind of cumbersome to enforce. We've, we've really shortened it, and I think made it more effective in what we did. Again, you can find those on pages four and six. And then again, we added a section on what we're calling changeable copy signage. Now, going into that just a little more detail, the first thing we had to do was actually define what changeable copy was. Now, changeable copy can mean one of a couple things. Those boards where you have the people out there with those big sticks, taking out the letters and putting letters in, anything that could be changed like that, it's changeable copy sign. We've broken it down into two different definitions. We have automatic changeable copy, which is a portion of a sign, which the messages can be changed through electronic or electromechanical means, and then what you would consider your manual changeable copy, the traditional, what you would see, like on church signs or something, where someone's out there moving the letters around manually. You'll notice, under the automatic changeable copy, we don't mention technology types like digital or LED. The big reason for that is sign technology does change over time. Eventually, if LED signage is kind of a thing of the past, and a new type of technology comes along, then you'd have to change your regulations to deal with that new technology. With these definitions, especially for the automatic, that really is kind of technology-neutral in that sense. So this definition should serve us fairly well into the future.
The changeable copy part on there, like you said, the digital, the, is that like what the city ran into as far as out there on, I mean, O'Ford Parkway? Is that...
For that billboard, that type of technology. Yes, sir.
So in this ordinance, that would, that would, that would allow that type of signage?
Well, we're not, as far as billboards are concerned, we're not, we're not recommending this for billboards at this time. Federal Highway Administration's working on a study, and I don't believe it's finished yet, about new regulations, state regulations for those type of billboards on highways, which they're not done with yet at this point. And we'll talk about billboards in a little bit. We're really not changing much in the way we do billboards right now.
So this is more towards like a gas station, or
Correct.
A market or something?
That's correct.
That sells fuel and things like that?
Yes, something like that. And again, we'll, we'll get into that just in just a minute. You'll see kind of where we're wanting to go with this.
Doug, under B on that changeable copy, only one contiguous automatic changeable copy area is allowed on a sign face.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, some are double-faced. I mean, so you're, you're just talking about one side, 'cause they're two-sided signs?
Right. Well, there's actually a section in the sign rigs that, that state that, as far as the, when you're calculating square footage, if they're back-to-back like that...
It's counted as one.
It's counted as one.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't think that would apply into that.
Okay.
It's a good point. Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Moving on. Just briefly, these are some of the provisions that we have. Now, this would be for typically, this is all the changeable copy. Most of these deal with automatic. They have to be designed to freeze the device in one position if a malfunction occurs, and they have to also be equipped with a means to discontinue the display if it malfunctions. And if something goes wrong, basically, they have to turn it off until they can get it fixed. Only one can, okay, we just talked about that one. All signs containing automatic changeable copy must be equipped with a mechanism that adjusts the brightness in response to ambient conditions. Typically, you'll see these signs brighter in the daytime, just so they can be seen. There's more ambient light, and then at nighttime, they don't have to be as bright, because there's no light. We want a mechanism in place that automatically adjusts, and that is something that is, that is done. Basically, you just don't want daytime brightness in the middle of the night, basically, is what we're shooting for there. Messages must be changed instantaneously, without any special effects. Basically, and I kind of equate that. If you're watching the screen change right now, like from that to that, from the first slide to that slide, there's this instantaneous change. No graphics, you know, no fading, dissolving, anything like that. That's what we're talking about, is that kind of a change. The messages must be static and complete in themselves, without continuation and content to the next message or to any other sign. In other words, you know, you see some of those signs that flash. They'll say, you know, "Today's special," then it'll go, you know, "Bread a dollar, milk something." You know, basically, we want it, a complete thought on it at one time, is what we're looking at. So that's really what we're discussing there. And at this point, we're proposing, well, actually, signs containing changeable copy can't contain messages other than those relating to the business on which it's located. We don't want them becoming off-premise signs. And then messages cannot change more frequently than five minutes.
So Doug, how would this affect, like, I know I've got a Walgreens near my house, and they have the changeable copy. So they would have to have the same message up for five minutes if they were counting?
And then it could change, right. It could change to a different message after that.
Okay.
Moving on to, just throughout the rest of the ordinance, section 20.03 is prohibited signs on pages seven and eight. Most sign ordinances reviewed had this particular section in it, whereas ours, not, not so clear. And we did add a detailed list of signs, things like signs in the right-of-way. Sorry.
Changeable every five minutes. What if you had a bank, or branch of a bank, and they had a temperature and date sign?
If you go to...
Is it, is it okay?
Yeah. I mean, we, there's a provision in here for that. Yeah, there's a, if you look on, actually, it's on page seven. Time, date, temperature information's considered one message. The display itself has to remain at least for five minutes before changing to a different message, but the information for time, date, can change no more than often every three seconds. So that takes care of, yeah, that takes care of that. I will point out, under the prohibited sign, letter S, which is on the top of page eight, any other sign which is not expressly allowed is prohibited. This is the amendment we put in our sign regs late last year, to allow us a chance to finish these, what we're working on right now. We do recommend leaving that in there, however, just in case signs come along that we have no regulations for. That gives us a chance to come up with regulations or craft regulations for them, as opposed to trying to regulate a sign that we have no regulations for. So that's why that's still in there. I just wanted to point that out.
Doug, it says, require signs to be constructed and installed and maintained in a safe and satisfactory manner, second page. And then it says, prohibited sign, abandoned or dilapidated signs. Does all this come under David?
They'd be the ones that would be enforcing that. Yes, sir.
And Doug, under the prohibited signs, P and Q, sound a lot like the billboard signs that have been debated so heavily, and you said that this wasn't really intended to be applied to billboards. Am I reading that wrong?
Well, what we said was, we weren't wanting to, the changeable copy, we weren't wanting to apply that to billboards at this time. Like, the changeable billboards, we don't want to see them changing at this point. So that, I think they coordinate together. Am I missing your question?
No, I was, I was reading changeable copy
Where's that five minutes on the changeable?
About what was allowed, and then it felt like this under-prohibited, it just seems like it basically undid some of what we just said, and what was allowed. So I'm just trying to be clear on what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Right. Well, under P, you know, sign display areas with varying light illumination or intensity, you know, blinking, bursting, dissolving, distorting. I mean, basically, it kind of goes back to what we were talking about. When we want to see a change, if you watch the screen again, this is the kind of change we want to see.
Right.
Something like that. What we're discussing here is not that. I mean, I could, if you want me to do a demonstration, you know, I could tell...
I know what's faded and faded. I mean, I understand what those transition pieces are. I just wasn't clear if that's what this, because like, when it talks about, you know, streaming, I guess I think about streaming video, the constant message.
Right.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear on...
Yeah, we don't want to see that either, at this point. Right. Just basically, we want to see static messages
Okay.
Without the video and everything. You know, at future time, if this, that's something we can revisit in the future. At this point, we're not recommending allowing that.
Okay. Sure I'm clear.
Okay.
Snipe signs?
Yeah, there's a, there's a definition. I, that was an addition that I saw in one of the, the sign codes. I liked it so much, I said we need to put that in there. Under definitions, it's an off-premise sign that's tacked, nailed, posted, pasted, glued, or otherwise attached to trees, poles, stakes, fences, or to other objects. Basically...
Vote for.
Well, that's a whole nother, but, but, these are off-premise signs, you know, and most of those aren't allowed in public rights away now. It's just, this deals with that as one category. They call it a snipe sign.
That's in the right-of-way. Is this not talking about someone's business or someone's yard?
This is more someone's business and yard. If they're putting, let me see, let me, it's an off, basically what it is, it's an off-premise sign. Yard sale signs, like if somebody goes around the neighborhood and puts them all over telephone poles, that's basically a snipe sign, is what that is.
Going down the country roads, there's signs, roofing signs, we do roofing, or we do this, or we do that.
If they're attached to telephone poles and things like that, that's a snipe sign.
No hunting.
What's that?
No hunting.
No hunting. Well, if it's on your personal premises, that, that's, I don't think that really, that's still on-premise if it's your property, so that, that doesn't really fall under there.
But if it's in the right-of-way...
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a, there's something in here that even says no signs in the right-of-way allowable sign, except, you know, for your...
Signs.
I'm sorry?
That includes political signs?
Yes.
But if, if political signs were on someone's property, in its own stakes imposed, it's legal?
I believe so, yeah. If it's their own property, yeah, like, vote for so-and-so.
If it's someone's own personal property.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah, I mean, we're not trying to take that away. Right. This is more the, like I said, the yard sale signs, or, you know, when I rock around my... more the, like I said, the yard sale signs or, you know, when I rock around my neighborhood and I see yard sale this Saturday, attached to the telephone pole, it's not supposed to be there. Though, that, that's what this is.
Poles, trees, right-of-ways, things like that.
Things like that.
So does it affect real estate and auction and stuff like that as well, then?
As...
Pointer signs?
Yeah.
Like pointers?
Mm-hmm. Well...
That's in the right-of-way.
Right, yeah.
You're not allowed any signs in the right-of-way, period. So, I mean, that's a given.
Now, we make some, I don't know if I have a slide for it, but we actually, there, there is some, there is a section here for directional signs.
Okay, we'll get to it.
We'll get to it, yeah, because I don't think I have a slide for that, but we can, we can get into that.
Let me go right back to oh, real quick, if you don't mind. The five-minute deal on the changeable copy signs. Where'd you come up with the five-minute part?
Well, it's one of those, it's one of those situations where we looked at a number of sign codes.
Right.
And the, as far as the changeable time, it's all over the map. I mean, you have some that go eight seconds. You've got some that go a minute. You've got some that go three or five. One went as long as, went 20. Basically, what you're wanting to do here is try to eliminate as much outside distraction as possible. One sign on a road probably isn't going to be very distracting if it changes once every, let's just say, once every minute. What we're trying to guard against is if you get a string of them down a stretch, and in the county, that may not be as big of an issue just because the type of development we see. But we're trying to avoid a series of blinking, changing signs as you go down a, a segment of road. So we thought that, you know, eight seconds was probably too little. We felt 20 minutes was too long. So we put the, the five minutes in, we thought was a, was a compromise.
The public hearing on this will be, when will this be?
Whenever we decide to set it. We haven't said it at this point.
Okay. This is just working through it and trying to?
Right. Yeah, and we'll get to the next steps here. We'll, we'll talk about some next steps coming up. But at this point, yeah, we, this is just a work session. We have, we have no future meetings scheduled at this point.
And you've already sent out, though, to a number of sign companies?
Yeah, we sent notice, we sent a letter out to about 60 or so different sign companies, and we put it on our website. Basically, what we did, we sent them the memo and said, here's a website, there's a copy on our website, download it and tell us what you think. So...
Gotcha. Have they already been commenting?
Well, you know, we haven't got that many comments on it, really. And I, you know, I don't know if that's a good thing or a not-so-good thing.
Well, you get closer to public hearing, they may.
They, they may. And, you know, we, I mean, the whole point, we invited them to come to this meeting as well. I'm not sure if anybody's...
Right here?
There is, okay, there are some folks here. So, I mean, if they've got some comments, yeah, I mean, this would be a good time to, to listen to what comments they have when we get through with the, the presentation part. But, yeah, that was the whole reason we decided to do it in this, in this manner. So...
Thank you.
Okay.
Doug, I have another question. On the introduction, you said that this was also intended for multi-tenant buildings because we didn't really have anything that addressed that.
Yes.
Where's the multi-tenant?
We'll, we'll get to that in just a minute, yeah. Any other questions on this? Okay. Getting into allowable signage, section 20.04, we did put in two categories, signs allowed in all zoning districts without a permit, and then signs allowed by zoning district. Some of these examples of those signs allowed with no permit required would be address on, you know, address on your house kind of things, memorial signs, agricultural signs not exceeding 32 square feet, flags displaying non-commercial messages, those kind of things. And then we get into a little bit more, I'll get in a little bit more detail with the signs by zoning district with, which you would have to have a permit for. We broke those down to residential, commercial, and industrial. We kind of lumped those together, and then planned developments. Changes for signage in residential districts.
What about back up on number four right there? Incidental signs limited to five square feet in sign area?
No trespassing, no, no hunting.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Those, those are what we call incidental signs, or entrance signs, you know, ATM, something like that. Changes for signage in residential districts, you'll see, we, one of the biggest changes we did here was external lighting being permitted and changeable copy, both automatic and manual, for legally established non-residential uses. The BZA has considered several applications over the years for lighted institutional signs like for churches and things. Typically, they're approved, and so we thought we'd make a allowance for, not necessarily internal lighting, but for external, which means a spotlight shining on the sign. We think that's a little less intrusive in residential areas than a internally lit sign was. But we would allow for up to 25% of the sign area to be for the automatic changeable copy. So if a church or daycare, what we're calling institutional type uses, would be, want a small portion of their sign for automatic changeable copy, we would allow that, again, under those regulations we talked about a little earlier. We also made a small allowance for some wall and flag signage, again, for legally established, not, non-residential uses. Those are not something we currently allow. Wall signage, we would allow for three square feet for every one linear foot of building frontage, not to exceed 40 square feet. And then the flag signage, and again, this would be not non-commercial, but for the commercial signage, two per lot maximum with 32 square feet per flag, is what we're looking at.
Doug, I just read something I have a question on.
Okay.
On page eight, under the allowable signage, A, 4.9, scoreboards or advertising signage located on athletic fields if oriented towards the field of play?
Mm-hmm.
I know there was a school, I think it was going out towards, yeah, towards Hubble Bowl, that they had their sponsor signs facing out. So this would require them to turn their sponsor signs facing out?
If they didn't want a permit, then, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Going into some more specific signage for commercial and industrial districts, again, we are allowing the changeable copy for commercial, industrial developments. We would permit them up to 35% of the sign area as opposed to just 25% for residential areas. We do have provisions for multiple tenant structures in here. I didn't go specifically into those, but basically, if you're looking at sign area like for ground signs, for one tenant, it's 50 square feet, but for multiple tenants, the sign itself shall not exceed 100 square feet.
Where are you at with page?
That's on page nine, toward the bottom of page nine.
Hey Doug, back to what Rhonda said, if, if a school did do that, and they had maybe signs on the inside of the fence, signs on the outside of the fence, would they have to get a permit for each individual business that they allowed to advertise there, or could they get a blanket permit that allowed them to do that?
If they had a, if they actually had a designated area, and I may have to, I don't know if David's here.
I'd hate to knock schools out of revenue, you know.
If they have a specific...
If it's not intrusive looking.
Yeah, if they have a designated area that they're looking at for signage, there may be a small permit fee associated with taking out one sign face and putting another one in. But the sign area itself, I don't think would have to go through the whole approval process every time. If it's a designated sign area, that this is where we're going to put our signage, but they have to change out the faces every so often, then that might be, that's something we, we work through our codes department about. It's a good, it's a good, good question.
I do have some feedback on this sign area for multi-tenant. My husband and I, we own a building in Smyrna, and it's a, it's a multi-tenant building. And when we began to put the signage up, or when we began to negotiate signage with Smyrna, they had something similar to this where it was X number of square feet, period. Because of the way this building is designed, you can, you know, you can alter how many tenants. Like, you know, somebody could occupy a double space or whatever. And so, in an effort to try to make it more uniform, what I asked for was a campus, you know, a campus-style sign, which allowed me as the landlord to sort of control the size and the, the material of the different signs, so it had a much more uniform appearance, and it was more attractive to the downtown area. So I didn't want, just because somebody had, because originally the way theirs was worded was based on a percentage of the facade, which actually, a percentage of the facade, it, it worked overall for the entire building, but it didn't work for an, an individual person. And so I'm just curious about the, you know, just the stock 100 square feet, you're giving a flat number regardless of the size of the building.
Are you talking about, are you talking about ground sign? Are you talking about actually attached signage?
It was attached to the building.
Okay, we'll, we'll get, we'll get to attached signage. This is, that, what I, right. What I just told you there was just ground.
Okay.
Yeah, and, but we'll go into a little bit more on the, the wall signage here in just, in just a minute. Okay.
And then one of the things that we sort of negotiated as well was the fact that if I didn't do a pole sign, because on a pole sign, I could have had, I would have only been charged for one side, even though, you know, visually, aesthetically, there would have been more visual clutter there had I done a pole sign and on the wall. So I was allowed to, as they rewrote the ordinance, I was allowed to get sort of a credit and get slightly larger on the wall for not having done a pole sign. There was, there's some, a little bit of flexibility there because you're trying to complement, you know, the building, try to complement that downtown area. And so I just want to make sure that we're mindful of the fact that, yes, I think our ordinance is needed to be rewritten, and, you know, I think they need to be updated. But I would also like to have a slight amount of flexibility for you to be able to say, okay, yes, if you're, if it's going to look better, then, you know, maybe you get an extra foot here or there and not do, if you're not going to do another type of sign, because you would be allowed to do multiple types of signs. So if you're reducing the overall usage of signs, then maybe you get more in a certain area, if it's, if it can complement it.
Okay. Yeah, I'll say that our current regulations actually have a small, I think it gets, I think it allows you extra 10% if you don't have a ground sign on the attached. We're not proposing that in here at this point, but that, that's why we're, you know, to get the ideas right.
Doug, what I've seen too, and a little bit of change in this commercial ground sign here, you've got, I may be losing my voice, I'm sorry, the 35% of the sign area may contain changeable copy message. I'm seeing that the, the changeable copy signs are so expensive that they're starting to, new businesses like Walgreens and some of the others in different cities are starting to do one sign that's a, basically a changeable copy or a, almost like a flat-screen TV almost, you know, and it'll say Walgreens in between there, or a drugstore, whatever it may be. I don't want to pick out Walgreens, but they're just doing that one sign. So then they're doing all their advertising on that sign. And here, we've got 35% shall not, or shall contain changeable copy, and then the rest of that 50 square foot, then can be the sign. So what, what is our situation in, in that? They'd need to go before the board and get a variance on that?
If they wanted, yeah, and we actually have specific variance criteria in here listed now that, again, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about in a little bit.
Okay.
But if they, I mean, it'd be no different if they want, if they want more than what they're, they're asking for, then they'd have to go to the BZA. Now, it seems like...
Well, like a 50 square foot might be the area, you know, or it might be like a four-by-10 or something like that or something, you know, just narrow and long. And that's, or maybe even five-by-10 in this situation, 50 square feet. But it would be, the whole thing would be, you know, a screen, basically. Instead of 35% of it being, it'd be the whole total 100% of what you're asking.
Be 100%, yeah.
But they would only have it in one section. It wouldn't be like name of your business and then underneath, and I see what you're doing, the 35% then would be changeable copy, max, but they would just have one sign, and it would be that. So, we're, we're not going to solve every problem anyway.
Right, I mean, basically what they're showing, basically what they're having is one, like you said, the whole sign is change, has the ability to be changeable, basically is what, yeah.
And through scrolling of Coke 99 cents, a 12-pack or something, or, you know, whatever it may be that they're advertising, then it will say the name of the company too in there within these things.
Within the other things, yeah, it's just, right, 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 right.
Yeah. Like I said, we're not going, we're not going to nail everyone, you know. There's going to be always something different that we'll need to address.
Mm-hmm.
That's what BZA's for, right?
Well, yeah. But we'll, we'll talk more about the variance criteria here in just a few minutes. Again, provisions for multi-tenant structures. We also add some provisions for awning, canopy, and flag signage, which we don't have any provisions for at this point. And then the wall signage is determined by wall area, and I've got a slide specifically for that. Again, not, not picking on Dollar General by any means, but this was an example that, that we had used. Our current regulations determine attached signage by the width of the building. So the width of the building of, of this particular case was 70 feet. Now, if you take the height of the building, which at this point makes no difference, but if you take the height of the building, that gives you 1,400 square feet, total front facade, square footage. Now, again, the allowable sign size currently is based on the building width, which is 50 square feet. Now, that's only 3.57% of the building frontage as you see currently. What we're proposing to do is actually have the wall signage determined by just a flat percentage, the 10% under, and you can see that on the proposed regulations down here. Our proposed regulations, we're looking at 10% of the front facade, which actually gives you 140 square feet today, as we're proposing it, as opposed to the 50 square feet that you'd be allowed to have any other time on that, in that business. So they're actually getting an additional 90 square feet of attached signage, or wall signage, if you will. Does that make sense to everybody? Is it, okay? Okay. So that's what we're proposing, how to handle attached or wall signage in commercial and industrial areas. Some other changes, again, awning signs, they shall not exceed 18 square feet in size. One sign allowed per door or window, and for multiple, multiple tenant sign, or structures, you allow one per tenant. And actually, this is something we saw on some of the other codes we looked at. They actually deduct the size of the awnings from the allowable wall signage. So if you were allowed, let's say you were allowed 100 square feet of wall signage, and you wanted a 10-square-foot awning, now this has to be with the signage on it. If it's just a blank awning, it's, that's not a big issue. But if it's got a 10-foot, square-foot sign on the awning, that discounts towards the amount of allowable wall signage. You'd be allowed to have another 90 square foot of wall signage on there using 100 square feet. Basically, that's just to help eliminate like clutter, as we, as we talked about, you know, rather than aligning them 100 square feet of this and then some more awning signs and whatnot. This is how we decided to, we fought best to, to handle that. Canopy signs, this would be like your gas station signs, basically, or back gas station canopies, if you will, over gas station pumps. One sign per canopy face, the sign shall not exceed 15 square feet per face, and the height should not exceed beyond the vertical edge of the canopy. Flag signs, we allow, again, these are commercial flags, three per lot maximum, 32 square feet per flag maximum, and then the, the maximum height of 24 feet. And we'd have to amend our regu, our rest of our regulations to put that in there. Billboard signs, again, we, we talked a little bit about this earlier. Most of our regulations really are remaining unchanged in regards to billboards. The size is not changing, the number, the height, location, spacing, lighting, those issues are not changing. We are proposing them at this point to be limited to I-24. You know, we have received some comments about possibility of allowing them in, like, up and down the major arterials into, into the county. But at this point, and really, the only difference between that and our code today is 840 is allowed to have billboards according to our current regulations. And at this point, we're, we just would like to limit it to I-24.
But through the state requirements, I don't think they allow 840 to have billboards because it's considered a sinicale.
Yeah, and, and I know we talked about that just for, just a quick minute before the meeting. That, that's something I want to look a little bit more into. My understanding of it was, is that you're correct, but if we had comprehensive zoning, then we lost that protection. But I'll, I'll, I'll look into that, but it's...
Are you talking about new billboards?
Yes, new, new billboard. Yeah, the existing one that are there, they're there, right. Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not getting into, getting down, getting into that part of it, yeah.
Doug, before we move on, this probably really is kind of silly, but someone had a landscaping sign. Is that covered in here anyplace?
When you say a landscaping sign, like...
Had bushes that they trimmed into something that said something.
That, like the sign, these, these bushes trimmed by so-and-so on someone, I'm, I'm missing.
Sculptive.
Oh, oh, oh.
Like Mickey Mouse pulled out in, in a hedge.
Well, we do make allowances for subdivision signs. I guess, I hadn't thought about that one, Mr. Phillips. That's a, that's a good question. And that's something I think we can, I mean, again, these are, that's what this...
I'm not sure we have to, but I've seen some that are really nice-looking, but you also could carry something a little bit out there that might not be so nice.
Long as the leaves don't flash or blink or...
Moving on to signage in planned development districts, we didn't really come up with any specific, yeah, BZA, there you go. We didn't come up with a specific signage requirements for planned development districts. Basically, we would require them to be consistent with the uses present. So if it's a residential-type PUD, then they would follow the residential standards. If they were commercial in nature, they'd follow the commercial. If they were a mixture, whatever that mix happened to be, the residential portion would follow the residential, the commercial would follow the commercial. This is how we handle that, or proposing to handle that. Moving on to section 20.05, we, I believe we simplified our temporary sign regulations and eliminated sign type distinctions. Our existing regulations differentiate between real estate signs, political signs, those kind of things. We propose looking at them all the same, residential, allowing a certain square footage in, in both the commercial and in, and the residential districts. So that's, that's how we propose to handle temporary sign regulations.
Now, there was a code relating to, to political signs that only let you put them out so many days before the election, and you removed that?
Yes. If you look at our, let me find it here, on page 11, where it starts, basically what we put in there is that any such sign shall be removed within 48 hours of no longer serving a purpose. So basically, there's no, there's no limit to when they can be put out, when the beginning, but two days, using the election as an example, two days But two days, using the election as an example, two days after the election, forty-eight hours, they need to be removed. Uh, yard sale signs could fall under that. Uh, you put the yard sale sign out, you know, once the yard sale's done, you know, if it's done on a Saturday, you've got until Monday to get the signs out.
Yard sales, four, is that right?
I'm sorry.
Four per year, is that a regulation?
I don't, it is in the city. Now, actually, our, give me just a second. We actually do have a definition of residential yard sale. A sale which occurs no more than three days in a ninety day period and no more than four times a year. So, yeah, you're allowed four three-day events, basically is what you said.
Doug, read number two there on eleven, under twenty point oh five.
Okay.
Sign area for lots of five acres or less. For lots of five acres or less. Twenty square foot maximum, uh, made to be divided into a maximum of five signs. Provided that no single sign may exceed eight square feet. I don't understand that.
Well, basically, okay, you're allowed to have twenty square feet of signage, okay, maximum. You can divide that into a maximum of five, which means you could have five four-square-foot signs, but we don't want to see any one particular sign eight square feet, over eight square feet. An area. Did that help?
Sign area for lots of five acres or less. This is temporary signage?
Yes. This would cover yard sale signs, uh, I mean, pretty much anything you can think of, special event, like, you know, a graduation party at the house sign, something like that.
We have a vested interest in the auction signs, now, how does it affect those?
Well, we actually, uh, when you go a little further on into the temporary signage, um, under directional, I guess that's kind of what you're talking about, those directional signs. Now, I don't have a specific slide for that, but if you look at page twelve, under directional signs.
So this is, this is for on-premise type stuff that this right here, number two, is talking about?
Right.
And subdivision lots, a lot of what you're talking about here.
Well, yeah, subdivision lots, I, I mean, I mean, anything under five acres technically is a subdivision. So, yes, but then we get into signs exceeding, you know, thirty-two square feet maximum, which can be contained in a, a single sign or multiple signs. We do have some directional signage out there as well, uh, under C. Now, that might not, I mean, if you're worried about those, uh, those type of signs, the auction signs, the bigger ones. I mean, we may have to look into that just a little bit more based on what we've got here.
Yeah, I mean, everybody seems to be at the same size, generally.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, so.
I thought it was about sixteen square feet, but they're about four by four.
Yeah.
That's what y'all's are.
Four by fours, everybody's pretty much gone to those. And even the commercial, uh, things there are four by fours usually.
Okay. Because that, that won't be covered under directional signs, under C. I mean, that, that'll kind of give you an idea where to go for it, but the sign itself, unless it was an onsite, then it might be, you might be okay, but, uh.
I'd be okay on number two, changing it from the eight square feet to the sixteen square feet, because I, I, you know, I've seen the four by four on the auction signs and, and really even, um, you know, as long as it's, like you said, it's for temporary use and it's removed within, you know, forty-eight hours.
What about a political sign, some of those are four by eights, you know?
Well, it would just all be covered under the, the temporary sign. Like, again, we're not going to differentiate between political signs, auction signs, it's all going to be one particular. What's that?
No.
Four by eight?
No.
No, not currently.
So under one right there to kind of take care of the whole kit and caboodle, it should be like a four by eight then?
Well, that's, I mean, if we did that, we'd have to, I know number two, if it's a five acre or less, I mean, right now, we're just looking at twenty square feet maximum. We'd have to raise that, and then, so I, what I hear you saying is thirty-two square feet maximum, no sign to exceed sixteen square feet. Is that kind of what I'm hearing you say?
I wouldn't even necessarily change the maximum, I, I, because I think you can still get it all under the sixteen square feet, right? Because you could have one sixteen square feet if you want the one, and then you still have four feet left to do something with if you want to have a second one. I'm, I'm okay with the maximum still being the twenty square feet. I just think the smallest sign needs to be at least the sixteen square.
Well, I think the standard even the city uses is a, is a four by eight, um, or less. So it's like thirty-two square feet's a regular standard sheet of.
Yeah, if you want, yeah, I mean, if you want four by eight, I think that's.
The sheet of plywooded sign.
Like I said, even, most, most folks were using sixteen square foot, but what I'm saying is the standard, they're, they're cutting them to get more signs for their buck, you know, because of other location stuff. But really, it's, I think a sheet, we got one sign man here, more is a thirty-two square foot sheet, so. And a lot of them, um, people running for different things as well as real estate and stuff are using that forty.
Commercially made.
Or thirty-two square foot.
Their roots go back to that four by eight sheet of plywood.
Right, right.
I'm cool with that.
Okay. All right. Moving on, uh, section twenty point oh six, which starts getting into permitting procedure. Uh, we added more detailed criteria and timeframes for sign permit application and review. Most planning literature reviewed concern, concerning signs strongly encourage having specific guidelines and timeframes for review. Our regu, our existing regulations do have them to an extent, but these regulations are more detailed and I think are, are the procedures more clearly outlined, isn't that, and how it, how it's done. Uh, talking about, I know we've kind of gotten into this before, right, with the sign variance criteria. Uh, section twenty point oh seven, it goes into the enforcement and appeals. A couple of sections, starting on page fourteen, such as A and B, those are areas that are already, uh, covered in our zoning resolution. We just make mention of, uh, to them about article twenty-two. Uh, the biggest change, again, being the variances. Uh, we're looking at actually coming up with our own, uh, where we come up with criteria for variances to the signs. Uh, the existing criteria we use now for signage really is based on the same criteria we use for all bulk variance requests, which a lot of times don't apply to signage requests. So we've actually come up with, uh, after looking at several different sign codes, we've come up with, uh, these, uh, I think there's six standards. Five, excuse me, well, actually, one, two, three, four, five, no, six standards, uh, that they'll have to meet in order to, for finding of hardship to be, uh, to be granted. And, uh, of course, one of those being the requested variance does not eliminate any requirement of this ordinance and does not allow any prohibited signs. So we're looking at more, you know, degrees of variances, you know, they couldn't, if you're allowed one ground sign, you can't ask for a variance for a second ground sign, basically, is what's kind of what we're looking at. But, uh, again, I'll, I won't go into every one of those, but, uh, they are on there for you. And then finally, we added a severability clause.
We've got two road frontages, though.
We do allow it for road frontages, yes, and that, and that's actually built into the ordinance, yes.
And then also, uh, interstate high-rise sign compared to a road frontage sign within so many feet?
Well, we don't make any special provision for interstate ground signs at this point. Um, that's something we might need to look into, uh, because it's come up, it's not the first time someone's mentioned that. But, uh, but at this point, and we don't make any special exceptions for them now either. You know, the ones that are out there, they've received a height variance.
That's where we're doing it, I think it might be an opportunity that we put that in there as far as, uh, on-premise interstate high-rise sign within. Because you've got a couple of new exits now that's within the county that are, um, you know, that may be justified, you know, coming in on. Because sooner or later, commercial's going to go in and it really is having to, I guess, probably with eight forty more than it is twenty-four, but still twenty-four. You could, we've got a couple more proposed for twenty-four, so. You know, in the Smyrna area that would be outside corporate city limits that we would have to adjust, so we need to work on something on that.
All right, well, we can certainly do that.
And that wouldn't be an off-premise, that'd be onsite.
Right, exactly, that, there's a big difference.
McDonald's or something, you know, and the.
Have a big, yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about. Finally, again, we added a severability clause, uh, basically what this, it's something that, again, that most planning literature we reviewed recommended having this. It's just a statement that says if for any reason any of the provisions in the ordinance are found to be unconstitutional, the rest, that they're declared to be severable from the, the code as a whole. And so we've placed that in there as well.
Doug, I have a couple of questions. Did we ever, um, and I didn't see it in here, um, did we ever address the amount of a window that can be covered by signage?
We did, uh, actually, I, I didn't go into that specifically, but if you look at, um, I think it's under the allowable signs without a permit.
You can just tell me, is it a percentage?
It, it is a percentage, if I remember correctly, I'll, I'll come and get it up here so I can tell you exactly what it is. Yeah, here we go. Window signs, it's under, it's on page eight, under allowable signage, no permit required. Number seven, window signs that do not exceed twenty-five percent of the area of the window or any glass door to which they are attached.
Okay, I'm, I'm concerned about the word attached, because I know, I, I've heard this in Smyrna, some people are getting around attaching it to the window. I think it needs to be visible from the window, because sometimes they're hanging it from the ceiling.
It's not actually attached.
Attached to the window.
I see what you're saying.
Getting around it.
Think the city changed that too.
Yeah.
For the square.
So it's supposed to attach, put visible.
From the window.
From the window, or door.
The other thing is, did you ever explore the limit, limiting neon? Because, you know, some stores are trimming out their windows in neon.
Well, we have not, uh, but, are you talking to neon signs?
No, they're trimming out their windows in neon, just strips.
Linear, linear strips of neon.
Okay, we didn't make any provision for this, either for or against it.
Sonic runs neon all around their canopies, you know, on the outside and stuff, and then some people are outlining their buildings in it or windows in it.
Okay, we, there's no provision in here for that.
They want to put something in there.
Yeah, we need to explore either permitting it, you know, some, you know, that it would, it would need to be approved. They, they could do it, I'm not saying they can do it, but it would need to, would require prior approval and permit or something. We need to look at some way of limiting that, because that's going to get out of hand.
The municipalities on that, they've, they've addressed that too on neon. Yeah.
Okay.
And it's per linear foot of frontage too, I think.
Per linear foot, okay. Okay.
While we opening the door, I mean, we, you know, we want to make this zoning ordinance as best as possible with our new sign ordinance in there too, so.
Uh, next steps, again, we're curious to hear what your comments are, and I, we've heard several. And, uh, of course, we're also curious to hear what the, the sign industry folks that have a chance to review this have to say, or any comments that they may have. Uh, good direction from you as to how you want to proceed. Uh, we could always have another work session if we feel that that's necessary, we're, we're fine with that. Uh, then eventually, we'd have a planning commission public hearing and then a board of commissioners' public hearing. Uh, at this point, we're probably looking at the fall before we really get into the, the board of commissioners and planning, now, maybe planning commission, but board of commissioners, definitely. But, uh, so that's the next steps as we have seen them, and that's our presentation. I hope we didn't bore you too much with the details, but, uh, at this point, uh, we're open for any other questions or comments.
Doug, what Mike brought up, we, we discussed this one other time about those baseball field signs. I think we allowed those in the one other time we talked about those. Do, do those signs, I see the outside, the one I go by, are they facing home base too? Are they covered, are they two sides or are they just one side now?
You're, I, I guess you're talking the ones on Shelbyville Highway, Christiana, yeah.
They face, they face the highway, are they facing home base also?
You know, I, I really, I don't know if they are, I've never actually been on the field. I would have to, I'd have to guess they, they may not be. I, I would think those are probably for the people who are driving by to see them. They, they could very well, for all I know, I really don't know.
If they are, would that maybe exempt them from?
If it's, if it's, if it's shown on the field, yeah, we actually make a provision for that in here, that they can do that, if it's actually facing the field of play, they can do that. Right.
Do both sides, what I'm saying.
But if they do both sides, yeah.
We're talking about schools here, and that's.
Right, well, yeah, I, I mean, we'd have to, at this point, we're not making any special allowance for that, but, uh, we are making allowance for the ones that face the field of play.
I think the purpose or intent was, you know, a fundraiser type thing for the, for the school and to do that. But I think the intent of the sign or business is whoever did those that they're on the road there is to advertise from the road. But, uh, I think if they're turned around, you know, facing home plate. I think it's fine.
Right, yeah, and that's, yeah, what you start getting into with the ones that face the road would be, I mean, it's basically, it's off-site signage is what it is.
Right, right.
Uh, you know, now, if they're having a, you know, if they're having some kind of a, a function at the school and they put up a small banner or something like that, I think that would fall under their temporary sign regulations as far as, you know, cookout on such and such a day for the softball boosters or something like that, something like that. As long as they met the criteria in the temporary regulations, I think they'd be okay. But when they're looking at actually advertising off-site businesses that face the road, that gets into a whole nother, uh, type of, type of sign.
Few months ago, talk about this, sort of overlooked that. We did talk about this, and we overlooked this issue because it was school. I don't remember how many months back it was.
Well, the, the last presentation we made for signage was back in February, so it was probably at that time. Uh, but again, we don't have a, we're, we're allowing the ones that face in the field, it's just the ones that face out, and it. I, I mean, again, that's a comment we can, we can certainly look into and see how, if, if there's any way to possibly regulate that. At this point, I'm not sure how we would do it, but, uh, that's, I mean, it's, that, that's the whole purpose of this meeting we're having right now, is to get ideas out there, so.
Okay, so when we do have a public hearing, we'll probably have some public comment on that.
Now, I did send a copy of this to the schools as well. I haven't heard anything back, but, uh, most of this wouldn't apply to them really anyway, but, uh, but there are some instances where, you know, they would want to see what we're proposing, so.
Well, and I can just say, as a business owner who buys lots of school signs on lots, lots of fields, you know, we, we're going to give money to those schools regardless. I mean, we do it with the full intent that we're supporting the program, a, and maybe there's an added benefit, you know, for us in it too, but, you know, you really just do it because you want to support the schools. And, and I don't know that turning those signs around to face them inward isn't, is really negatively going to impact those schools. I think the people that are going to support those schools are going to support those schools. At least that's been my experience.
Okay, public hearing.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much finished with my presentation. I think there is someone here from the sign industry that would probably like to make some con, at least I'm.
You have some comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks, uh, thanks for opening this up to us. Um, I'm Ryan Taylor, I'm with Jocelyn Signs in Nashville, and, uh, we do a lot of signs in Murfreesboro, not so much in Murthivore County, but we're, uh, we're appreciative of being able to have this opportunity. I think the biggest ones for me, I, we spoke about a lot of the ones that I, ones I had questions about, and I appreciate you guys being so attentive to all that. The, uh, the biggest ones we would have, uh, a question about would be, uh, under setbacks and placement, there's a section under CB which says, uh, no sign shall be located within the visual triangle, otherwise cause hazard to vehicle, uh, or pedestrian traffic. We just wondered who would be the determining, uh, determining agent on that one, who would, who would, how that formula would, uh, would come about. Uh, in Nashville, there is a, a triangle formula, I wondered if that would be the same.
One as well, yeah, yeah, we have one on our zoning. I can make you, before you leave, just give me a minute, I'll, I'll make you a copy of our definition, that, that should hopefully help you.
Uh, another big one for us would be under non-conforming signs. Um, it, it says that, uh, without exception, the minor repairs and maintenance would, would basically make it an illegal sign. And we're wondering if that includes face replacements, uh, if you've got a non-conforming sign and the new, new tenant comes in and wants to, to change that face, would that be, uh, allowed?
Well, under B, where it talks about, uh, it says with the exception of minor repairs, maintenance, uh, no alterations, non-conforming sign shall be allowed. Unless otherwise allowed by law, any structural or substantial improvement to a non-conforming sign, except for printing or refinishing the surface of the existing sign face or sign structure, so as to maintain the surface, I'm sorry, maintain the appearance, shall be deemed an abandonment of the non-conforming sign result.
So redoing the face would be okay then, right?
Uh, as I read this, yeah.
Excellent.
Well, Doug, that was one, that's one of the questions I had too, was under, um, under A on that. It says when a property is redeveloped, the signs on the property must be brought into compliance, and so I, I wonder about, you know, when you change over tenants.
Well, at one point, yeah, at, at one point, we actually looked at having this, um, we actually had it whenever the, uh, I'm trying to remember how we had this worded originally. It had to be when the property or the use changed, it had to be brought into conformance. We actually scaled that back a little bit and just put in when a development is re, when a property is redeveloped. I mean, if it's, you know, everything's torn down and rebuilt from scratch, is kind of, kind of what the line, I think we were looking at it from.
Well, the difference is non-conforming and illegal non-conforming. Illegal non-conforming may be in the right of way. Non-conforming is just, it may be oversized or something like that, and you can change those faces out according to this. And maintaining it and somebody goes out and somebody comes back in, you're going to be able to put new ballast and all that stuff, and you're going to have to re-permit it. It'd just be a non-conforming, still a non-conforming sign, but if something ever happened to it, tornado took it down, a car ran into it, then it, when it's rebuilt, it's going to have to be rebuilt conforming to our sign on.
And I assume that also includes, pardon me, uh, some sort of like, if they have routed metal faces on them, uh, we'll have to be able to take that entire face off and put a new routed face up there. Would that be included in that?
I, I think it would be, well, we'll clarify this a little bit, I mean, you, you bring up a good point, that the way it's worded, it, it's, you know, it, you might not be able to, to get that out of that.
That's a, that's a catch loophole right there. If you take the whole sign down, you're not going to be able to put the whole sign back up.
Well, no, sir, not the whole sign, just the faces. A lot of times i- in some of the older signs, they, they've got, um, a, a white plexiglass background and then they have a routed face on top of that. And so, when you change out a tenant, you have to change out that face. We wouldn't change out the entire sign, just that one section.
What you get into is if you change that can out, if you change the can, then you got...
Sure, then you're con- you need to bring in a conformance.
You're redoing the...
And something else to remember, too, is we're, you know, we're kinda bound by state law, you know, with the non-conforming section thirteen, seven, two, oh, eight, you know, whatever's allowed by state law, we're not gonna be able to prohibit it. So, uh, you know, there are, they, they do make allowances for certain signs and, and how that works, so whatever we do would have to be consistent with the state law.
Fair enough. Um, and then the last thing for me would be the changeable copy signs. We would love to see it, um, increased to like fifty percent, like you were speaking earlier about the, um, people that are using, uh, you know, half of them as a, as the, I think Walgreens was using half of their, their logo, and then the other half, they were changing the message, right? That would be great if we could have up to fifty percent of the allowable square footage, um, uh, be changeable copying. I, I see why you wouldn't wanna do that necessarily, um, but we feel like the customers that we're generally supplying signs for, they wanna have the, the sign up there with their name, but more importantly to them, they usually wanna have the time and temperature on there. They wanna have something, uh, larger than thirty-five percent of what the, I think if it's fifty square feet, I came up with, what, seventeen point five of that would be allowable of changeable copy? That's just not a very big sign over, over fifty square fe- feet even. We were thinking, uh, something like fifty percent, like I said.
Now, I guess you're just talking in commercial and industrial areas?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, not necessarily in the residential?
No, that, that, we wouldn't be too concerned about that one. Um, churches, we can deal with.
Fifty percent, then you're talking about twenty-five square feet. So, what I was, no, what I was saying is that they're using it all-inclusive in one sign and not having anything else. Their whole one sign is changeable copy.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, I don't think we've ever, have actually sold any of those. I do know that those exist. Um, we've not had any of our customers, uh, go that way, uh, even in Nashville or any other city, but, um, but yeah, I think, I think half of the sign would be, um, I don't know, more advantageous to the customer who'd be looking to get a, a bigger, uh, bigger share out there. And I, I said that was my last thing, but I did have one more thing, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
And where did my note go? The building height, on page nine. So, these are the signs, the ground, free, freestanding ground signs. Uh, you've got the maximum height on here as...
Ten feet.
Ten feet, yeah. Uh, thank you. We were thinking, we, uh, I think in Murfreesboro, I think in the city, uh, you're allowed to go up to the, I think it's sixteen overall feet. Um, we would like to see it be a match of the actual building height, so if you've got like a...
Which one are you talking about now? I'm sorry.
Uh, this is on page nine, uh, number two, uh, A, and then three, the three I's. Underground freestanding signs. Yeah, um, yeah, so sixteen overall height is the, sixteen feet overall height is the, is the norm in, in Murfreesboro, and we would think that it would be, um, I guess if it could match the building height, so if it was twenty, uh, feet tall, then we could go, take the sign up that tall, so it could sort of match the height.
Yeah, I, I see where you're going with that. Of course, a, a lot of the signs we're talking about have, you know, we're not talking, um, you know, like, we're not in the middle of downtown Murfreesboro or on like Broad Street or something like that, where, you know, we just don't have large commercial corridors like they do, where it may not stand out as much as it, as it, as it would maybe in, in some commercial areas in the county. Yeah, this really, I mean, we actually, that, that's not a whole lot different than what we currently, we currently have in our, our regulations.
Okay.
Um, I think, uh, let me just flip to it real quick. Let's see here.
Twenty point oh four.
Industrial areas, we actually do allow fifteen feet currently. Uh, institutional are ten feet, commercial twelve, and residential is eight, and agricultural are six. We just went with ten foot across the board is what we did. But again, for a lot of those reasons that I just talked about, is, you know, it's, it's one thing if it, if it's on a commercial strip where it doesn't look out of place, uh, at the same time, I, I, I would have some concerns about, I mean, I, we'll do whatever you want us to do.
What did you say, sixteen feet?
Well, uh, that's what it is in Murfreesboro City, yes.
That's what I was thinking, si- yeah, sixteen, so what, I mean...
Well, we would suggest, uh, max of, uh, maxing, I'm sorry, matching the, uh, building height. So, if that was twenty, it would be twenty feet, maybe a max of twenty, um, or even sixteen. Cause then you'd have to... Just higher than ten feet. I mean, ten feet's only, what, this tall, give or take, right? Those dang rascal kids, they'll be out there hitting it with rocks.
Just keep in mind, if that's something you would like us to look at, that that means we could have, we have the possibility then to have thirty-five height, thirty-five foot signs in height. Uh, if, if the building was thirty-five feet, which they're allowed now, a maximum thirty-five foot height, we could have a thirty-five foot high sign. That's just something to keep in mind.
I'm sorry, I didn't make myself clear. We would say, uh, max the, I'm sorry, match the building with a max of twenty. That was our recommendation, but I, I...
But where, where were you getting matching the building height, then? You're, you're saying match the building height up to twenty feet, is that what you're saying? Oh, all right, all right, all right.
Yeah. I get all tongue-tied.
Sorry.
Match the building or up to twenty feet.
Right, whatever's...
Which if the building height is sixteen, then it's sixteen. If it's twenty then, or thirty feet, then it's only goes to twenty.
Again, like I said, this, we're well...
Something we look at, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, we'll do whatever you would like us to, to do. Thank you very much, that's all, I'm sorry.
I have one thing for you. Um, I don't know if you're planning on coming back to when we do have the public hearing, but it's always very helpful for us to have visual aids. So, since you're in the sign business, if you wanted to maybe give us some visual samples of what a thirty-five percent animated versus a fifty percent animated would look like, then that makes it a little more tangible for us.
Excellent, thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions?
Don't bring a thirty-five foot tall sign in here. Dale?
I appreciate Todd sitting in for me. I was at a meeting with the mayor concerning Shore's Road. We've, uh, been pumping out there since, uh, the Wednesday after the original flood, which was made first and second. We probably pumped close to forty million, a little excess forty million gallons out of the area. We've got it down now where there's, there's still some water there, but the, uh, the depth of the water is such that it's hard to pump. You need a little bit, you know, water over your pump, so we're gonna stop the operation as of today as far as pumping in that particular sub. And, uh, so, just wanted to, that was basically the meeting where it was more than that was a decision made between the mayor, Mur- Murthvere Electric, and there were several other people involved in this decision. I just wanna put that out there for information to the public. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Have a motion?
Well, I wanted to ask Dale just real quickly then, while we're, while we're talking about that issue. We appreciate everything the county's been doing, of course, to help those folks out and get that water out there so they at least can get in and start working on their properties and, and getting cleaned up. The cause of that was, uh, I guess the, um, the sinkholes filled up and, and all that, was the water in the planting on that directed, uh, we used to, and I don't think we do that anymore, uh, directed for the sinkholes and how big they are and all that sort of stuff. And there's a ton of sinkholes over in there.
Yeah, the, the properties in there, except for Sandia Village, which is a, a small subdivision, are all tracks. So, when they come in, they don't come in under the subdivision regulations, and basically, the people have a, you know, they can build a house there. So, there's, it's not a coordinated effort. Those houses were built over a period of time. When they come in, we try to point out to them, there are localized flooding. There's no streams or anything in this area, so there is no acknowledged, uh, FEMA floodplain as such. But we do know that the whole area's in a bowl, if you look at it, and the, typically, on a, a small rain, they will get water in there. A smaller rain, of course, rain we had was the largest one we've had in quite a while, but, uh, then the water will eventually sit there and go out through the sinkholes, that, or through evaporation or transpiration or some of those types of, uh, activities, and so. What we saw was not, what has not happened in the past is just that the quantity we have was so much more than we had in the past. But the, to answer your question is, there was no coordinated effort to, to, um, channel that flow or anything because they each, they're allowed by the regulations to come in with those tracks one at a time or however they want to, to build those houses.
Is there anywhere to carry that water long-term? Is there any, you know, where you could coordinate it into a, a foreseeable subdivision out there or anything that could help those people out?
If you tried to carry the water out of there, you'd have to carry it probably, it'd have to be over a mile. And it would also be, because you'd have to start your, your pipe at the bottom, and then you have a minimum flow you'd have to, you know, the pipe would probably be buried, our ditch would be twenty, twenty-five feet in the ground. And so, um, the expense, of course, plus it, the, that would be the shortest way, and you have to drill under eight forty also to do that, so that, the, the, the cost would be, you know, one to two million dollars to do that problem. So, there is no easy way, there's no stream we can put in, there's no lake we can put in and, and have to handle that particular situation out there.
Now, is there anything we learned from this that might change how we do anything going forward, or is this just isolated?
Well, the, the way our, uh, proposals work, unless we change it so that each individual who brings in a new, uh, track has to then look at all the drains coming onto that track and figure out a handle so it doesn't affect the neighbors, uh, which would mean if, if, uh, Steve brought in Track A on a road, build a house, and then Craig brought in one six months later, Craig would say, "Well, then, Craig, you gotta handle all the runoff coming from, uh, Steve's place, plus the ones beyond him, and then you gotta handle it such a way that it doesn't affect any of your neighbors." So, if you tried to put like detention areas on those or retention, pretty soon you'd have a series of very large and larger and larger holes in the ground to handle this type of stuff. And so, we try to handle it with the subdivisions, but we do not get involved in handling it with the tracks or any of those individual houses at the time unless you guys wanna change the regulations to that effect.
And a guy with a small track, he might, his whole place might be detention for him.
Yeah, there are places where you have enough volume coming through there, even before you build this house, it wouldn't, it would basically take up the whole track for a detention area to do that.
Okay, anything else? Have a motion?
To adjourn.